... A open public hearing with regards to requests for inclusion of lands in agricultural district number one twenty-four. Notice of public hearing.
Notice of public hearing on request for inclusion of lands in agriculture district number one twenty-four. Notice hereby given that one-on-one request for inclusion of predominantly viable agricultural land have been filed with the Green County Legislature and deferred to the Green County Agricultural and Farming Protection Board pursuant to section three oh three B of Article twenty-five, eight A of nearest state agriculture and market law. And a public hearing will be held by the county legislature of the county of Green, State of New York in the legislature meeting room, fourth floor, town of Building four eleven Main Street, Castlewood, North, on the nineteenth of May, February twenty twenty-five, at six twenty P M. To consider the recording recommendations of Green County Agricultural and Farming Protection Board to enter following particles, following forty-nine point seven three acres to Green County Agriculture District number one twenty-four. Owner Rowley Andrew, address nine thirty-seven Honey Hollow Road, Town Village Baltimore, parcel two six point zero zero, N S six, N S one nine, front one, acres forty-nine point seven three. Agriculture District one twenty-four currently encompasses eight hundred and forty plus acres of castlemore. One two thousand one nine included on highland acres within the Green County town of Patons, Anson, Carroll, Patville, Kupstaki, Durham, Greenville, Alhawat, Hunter, Jewett, Passville, Lexington, Baltimore, and Monroe. And villages of Patons, Patville, Kupstaki, Hunter, and Channisville, and higher counties of Green, Norman's Agriculture District number one twenty-four. A description of that or a description and the purposes and limitations of the Green County Agricultural and Farming Protection Board may be examined in the office of the court of the Green County Legislature during regular business hours. All parties, members, and citizens will be heard by the county legislature at the public hearing.
Thank you, Tammy. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear comments from the public regarding requests for inclusion of lands in agricultural district number one twenty-four. If there's anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regard to requests for inclusion of lands in agricultural district number one twenty-four, I would just ask you to raise your hand to be recognized and understand please state your name and record. And with that, we'll begin the hearing. For anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regard to requests for inclusion of lands in agricultural district number one twenty-four. Again, is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regard to requests for inclusion of lands in agricultural district number one twenty-four? Before time, again, is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regard to requests for inclusion of lands in agricultural district number one twenty-four? Ladies and gentlemen, we thank you for attending this public hearing, and this hearing is now closed. We're moving to the second floor. Like to open a public hearing on local law number one of two thousand twenty-five, a local law entitled, a local law amending local law number one of two thousand twenty-three relating to providing real property tax exemptions provided for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers in accordance with section four sixty-six A and four sixty-six L of the real property tax law. And at this time, I wish Tammy to read the minutes of the public hearing.
Notice of public hearing. Notice hereby given that there had been a review presented to the county legislature of the county of Green on the fifth of May, January twenty twenty-four. Local law, connected number one of twenty twenty-five, a local law entitled, a local law amending local law number one of twenty twenty-three, relating to providing real property tax exemptions provided for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers in accordance with sections four sixty-six A and four sixty-six L of the real property tax law. Being enacted by the county legislature of the county of Green as follows. Section one, the purpose of this local law is to amend local law number one of twenty twenty-three by amendment to section two A to read as follows. A, the applicant resides in the county of Green and is a member of the appropriate armed fire company or fire department or appropriate armed fire ambulance service. Provide service within the city, village, town, or total district or provide service for neighboring city, village, town, town, or total district. Section two, this local law shall take effect immediately upon signing with the Secretary of State. Notice is further given that the county legislature of the county of Green will conduct a public hearing on the episode of local law on the nineteenth of May, February twenty twenty-five, at six twenty-five P M. In the public speaking room, county office building, four eleven Main Street, fourth floor, Castlewood, North, at which time all persons interested in the subject matter thereof will be heard, starting on the same.
The purpose of this public hearing is to hear comments from the public regarding local law number one of two thousand twenty-five, the local law entitled, a local law amending the local law number one of two thousand twenty-three relating to real property, providing real property tax exemption provided for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers in accordance with sections four sixty-six A and four sixty-six L of the real property tax law. If there's anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard, I would just ask you to raise your hand to be recognized and understand please state your name and record. With that, we'll begin the hearing. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regard to local law number one of two thousand twenty-five, a local law entitled, a local law amending local law number one of two thousand twenty-three relating to providing real property tax exemptions provided for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers in accordance with sections four sixty-six A and four sixty-six L of the real property tax law? Yeah? Again, is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regard to local law number one of two thousand twenty-five, a local law entitled, a local law amending the local law number one of two thousand twenty-three relating to real property service, real property tax exemption provided for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers in accordance with section four sixty-six A and four sixty-six L of the real property tax law? Hearing well, is there anyone else who wishes to be heard with regards to local law number one of two thousand twenty-five, a local law entitled, a local law amending the local law number one of two thousand twenty-three relating to providing real property tax exemptions provided for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers in accordance with sections four sixty-six A and four sixty-six L of the real property tax law? Hearing done, the hearing is closed. Let's call regular meeting number three for the year two thousand twenty-five. The word and ask everyone to sit down and just sit over and say a little prayer. If you are under chair, over by, and stand with the real law.
I'd like to salute and stood by the United States of America and to the parliament from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Between all legislators and our president with the session of, what you said, binding?
If there's no objections or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting, I would let them approve. Can I get a motion in a second, dispense with committee reports. Mark Haddish, Hobart, well, Mark Haddish and Hobart, thank you. We have no meeting correspondence for this month, and with that, we can move on.
Motion to adopt local law number one of twenty twenty-five, a local law number, a local law number one of twenty twenty-three relating to providing real property tax exemptions for volunteer firefighters and volunteer ambulance workers in accordance with section four sixty-six A and four sixty-six L of the real property tax law. Make it a motion?
Harnett.
Who was it?
May, Arness. Arness, Lennon.
Okay, make it a second.
Labera.
Speaker Campbell, aye. legislator Hobart.
Aye.
legislator Winona.
Aye.
legislator Webb.
Aye.
legislator Lemon.
Yes.
legislator Lucas.
Aye.
legislator Labera.
Yes.
legislator Martina.
Yeah.
legislator O'Connell.
Aye.
legislator Trump.
Aye.
legislator B. Davis.
Aye.
legislator Davis.
Aye.
chairman.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, we have nine thousand four fifteen ayes. Yeah, aye.
Nine thousand one hundred and change, if you can keep me even, that works.
So we have nine thousand one hundred and ayes, zero noes, and eight seventy-eight consigns.
Eight seventy-eight. That's very.
Okay, dash twenty-five, authorization of paid claims offered by legislator Davis, seconded by legislator Martinez.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose?
Resolution number forty-nine dash twenty-five, authorization of paid claims, highway, offered by legislator Hewitt, seconded by legislator Martinez.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number fifty-two dash twenty-five, approval recommendations for inclusion of land into agricultural district number one twenty-four and prior mega list secret declaration. Offered made by legislator Trump, seconded by chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose?
Resolution number fifty-one dash twenty-five, authorizing the real to the Green County and Mountain Top Historical Society. Offered made by legislator Lennon, seconded by legislator Campbell, and.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose?
Resolution number fifty-two dash twenty-five, authorizing Green County Economic Development towards own planning departments to prepare and solicit proposal for an evaluation for the expansion of the Mountain Top Historical Society's parking facility. Motion made by legislator Trump, seconded by legislator Murray.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry.
Resolution number three dash twenty-five, setting public hearing, development block. Motion made by legislator Campbell, seconded by legislator Trump.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number fifty-four dash twenty-five, setting public hearing, C D G F, vision micro and privacy program. Offered made by legislator Trump, seconded by legislator Campbell.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose?
Resolution number fifty-five dash twenty-five, amending resolution number four fifteen dash twenty-four, awarding base feeding services for various kind of, offered made by legislator Martinez, seconded by legislator Campbell.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose?
Resolution number fifty-six dash twenty-five, authorizing legal purchase Green County Department of Buildings and Grounds. Offered made by legislator Martinez, seconded by legislator Campbell.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number fifty-seven dash twenty-five, authorizing advertising for this to the web. Offered made by legislator Campbell, seconded by legislator Lemon.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose?
Resolution number fifty-eight dash twenty-five, federal transit F T A four million grants, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, federal transit F T A four million grant for rural areas, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, section fifty-three eleven, operating and capital assistance responsible for continuing property improvement. Offered made by legislator Campbell, seconded by legislator Wright.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number fifty-nine dash twenty-five, authorizing agreement with the R. Lynn Hudson, section fifty-three eleven, operating and capital assistance responsible for continuing to ambulance and third-party operators. Offered made by legislator Martinez, seconded by legislator Labera.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number sixty dash twenty-five, increasing fees Green County Board of Elections. Offered made by legislator Labera, seconded by legislator O'Connell.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number sixty-one eight twenty-five, accepting of Green County Integrated County Plan for child and family services. Offered made by legislator Campbell, seconded by legislator Wright.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose?
Resolution number sixty-two dash twenty-five, a second formal proposal for the replacement of a county group twenty-three C over over tributary to the East Hill Town, Hewitt, C I M twenty-three C dash one three dash four through nine dash J W. Motion made by legislator Wright, seconded by legislator Campbell.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number sixty-three dash twenty-five, a second formal proposal for glad salary pair of four road bridge over Little West Hill Town of Hudson City three dash two zero one two zero dash zero. Offered made by legislator Wright, seconded by legislator Campbell.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number sixty-four dash twenty-five, amending resolution number four sixty-nine dash two four, authorizing the Highway Department to enter into the Green, with C D F permit for any parents or as will necessary for investigation and repair of peaceful facilities below ninety-sixty-one, River Road in the town of Baltimore. Offered made by chairman Lindner, seconded by legislator Martinez.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose?
Resolution number sixty-four dash twenty-five, authorizing purchase of one new twenty twenty-five excavator for the Highway Department. Offered made by legislator Wright, seconded by legislator Martinez and chairman Lindner.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose?
Resolution number sixty-six dash twenty-five, authorizing purchase of two new twenty twenty-five wheel orders for the Highway Department. Offered made by legislator Hewitt, seconded by legislator Wright.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose?
Resolution number sixty-seven dash twenty-five, authorizing purchase of one new twenty twenty-five excavator for the South Lake Department. Offered made by legislator Hewitt, seconded by legislator O'Connell.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number sixty-eight dash twenty-five, authorizing purchase of one new twenty twenty-five wheel order from the South Lake Department. Offered made by legislator Lemon, seconded by legislator Martin.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose?
Number sixty-nine dash twenty-five, authorizing Green County Department of Human Services agent and community county community health care association. Offered made by chairman Lindner, seconded by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number seventy dash twenty-five, authorizing agreement between Green County Department of Human Services agent and coordinated care services in C C S I. Offered made by legislator Lemon, seconded by legislator Labera.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose?
Resolution number seventy-one dash twenty-five, authorizing Green County Department of Human Services agent and incorporation for national and community service for federal assistance program. Offered made by legislator Wright, seconded by legislator Campbell.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number seventy-two dash twenty-five, authorizing agreement between Green County Department of Human Services agent and full name N S R D with C D N. Offered made by legislator Campbell, seconded by legislator O'Connell.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number seventy-three dash twenty-five, authorizing agreement between Green County Department of Human Services agent and the retired senior volunteer program R I E P, funding amended by my so forth, grant. Offered made by legislator Campbell, seconded by legislator O'Connell.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number seventy-four dash twenty-five, authorizing Green County Mountain House Center with eight university. Offered by legislator Hobart, seconded by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number seventy-five dash twenty-five, authorizing outstage travel board from Seabird. Offered made by legislator Campbell, seconded by legislator Hewitt.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose?
Resolution number seventy-six dash twenty-five, reappointing member for the elected families. Offered made by legislator Lemon, seconded by legislator Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number seventy-seven dash twenty-five, amending resolution number forty-eight dash twenty-four, appointing member to the Green County Fire Department Board. Offered made by legislator Martinez, seconded by legislator Campbell.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number seventy-eight dash twenty-five, appointment of deputy fire coordinators and habits to the general deputy for native emergency services. Offered made by chairman Lindner, seconded by legislator Campbell.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number seventy-nine dash twenty-five, budget amendment Green County Department refitization of records. Offered made by legislator Martinez, seconded by legislator Lucas and Labera.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number eighty dash twenty-five, budget amendment Green County Board of Elections state fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five ranks. Offered made by legislator Lemon, seconded by legislator Wright.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number eighty-one dash twenty-five, budget amendment Green County Board of Elections side security mediation grant. Offered made by legislator Lemon, seconded by legislator Campbell.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose?
Resolution number eighty-two dash twenty-five, budget amendment Green County Board of Elections affluency innovation and election resource grant woven. Motion made by legislator O'Connell, seconded by legislator Lemon, and.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number eighty-three years twenty-five, budget amendment and awarding bid for high-pressure air compliance for emergency services. Offered made by legislator Martinez, seconded by legislator Hobart.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number eighty-four years twenty-five, correcting assessable all time capital bill fee rent deed tax map ID number one five five point zero eight plus three dash seven. Offered made by legislator Lemon, seconded by legislator Wright.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry.
Resolution number eighty-five dash twenty-five, correcting assessable all time Greenville, time Greenville tax map ID number one two point zero four and end date three one. Offered by legislator Davis, seconded by legislator Martinez and chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Carry. Chairman, the point was to do tonight versus reappointing member to the advisory council to the Green County Department for Aging for two thousand twenty-five. Being duly authorized as chairman of the Green County Legislature and hereby reappointed upon recommendation of Amanda Lyons, executive director of the Green County Department of Human Services Aging, the following as a member of the advisory council in the Green County Department for Aging for two thousand forty-five, Kathy Scanlon, representative of strong independent living center of the Hudson Valley. Second is reappointing a member to the Green County Youth Advisory Board for two thousand twenty-five, being duly authorized as chairman of the Green County Legislature and hereby reappointed upon the recommendation of Amanda Lyons, executive director of the Green County Department of Human Services, the following as a member of the Green County Advisory Board for two thousand twenty-five, and God Smith, for the overall public. Anyone having other business to bring before the board tonight? The moral Germans, what were you going to do, the undersheriff?
I would, okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn our meeting this evening in memory of Michael James Overbaugh, who passed away on February twelfth of two thousand twenty-five at the age of sixty-two. Michael was born and raised in Catskill, New York, attending St. Patrick's Elementary School and graduated from Catskill High School in nineteen eighty. He enlisted in the Navy and served on the submarine tender Emory S. Land based in Norfolk, Virginia, as a machinery repairman, second class, working on nuclear submarines. On February fourteenth, nineteen eighty-two, he married his high school sweetheart, June Gallagher. Upon his discharge from the Navy in nineteen eighty-four, they returned home together to Catskill. Michael worked for the New York State Department of Corrections for nearly twenty-six years, retiring from the Green Correctional Facility with the rank of lieutenant. Michael also was an active member of the Kiskatom Fire Department for over forty years and was chief at the time of his passing. In two thousand one, he was named one of Green County's Firefighters of the Year for saving the life of a fellow firefighter. In two thousand twenty, he was appointed by Sheriff Peter J. Kuzminski as the superintendent of the Green County Jail. He later was appointed as the undersheriff of the Green County Sheriff's Office, a position he held until his passing. He also remained an active member of the Town of Hunter Police Department as a patrolman. Michael's accomplishments as a sailor, a police officer, a firefighter, and the undersheriff are eclipsed by his loyalty to his family and friends. Michael was a husband. He and June built a life, a home, friendships, and a family together from the time they committed their lives to one another as teenagers to his dying breath together at their kitchen table. Michael was a father. He loved his children, Adam and Eileen, unconditionally, instilled lasting values, and demanded the most of them. He knew, and he told them, that they would excel at anything they chose to do in this world. He deeply trusted Adam's wife, Nicole, and Eileen's husband, Michael, with the responsibility of loving his children. Michael was a grandfather. Papa was both an idol and a playmate to Logan and Avery. His laughter and soul will live on within them. Michael was a brother to Larry, Carol, Susan, Marion, and Billy. They shared the humor, the stories, and the bonds that only those who are siblings can share. Michael welcomed his sibling spouses into that deep bond. Many of them grew up together as if brothers and sisters from the beginning. Michael was a brother-in-law to his wife's siblings, Terry Joe, Kevin, Shirley, Carmel, and Mona. He cared for them profoundly because his mother and father-in-law, May and Sean Gallagher, made Michael as much a part of their home as any of their own children. Michael was a friend, a mentor, and a teacher to many. He opened his heart to a limited few and offered them his unfaltering loyalty in exchange. Because of this, there are better people in this world, many of whom are corrections officers, police officers, and firefighters. Michael was a hard but fair man. The luckiest of us were our privilege to know him and love him. He often would remind us of what was important by saying, "Who has it better than us?" Michael is survived by his wife, June Gallagher, daughter, Eileen, and husband, Michael Shields, son, Adam, and wife, Nicole Ricobono, two grandchildren, Logan and Avery, five siblings, Harold, which we know as Larry, our colleague Linda Haynes's husband, Carol Frank O'Neill, Susan and Stephen Loftman, sister Marion, and brother William or Billy and his wife, Carrie Baldwin Overbaugh, and many nieces and. Carrie Baldwin Overbaugh, and many nieces and nephews. He is predeceased by his parents, Harold and Marion Overbaugh. And I think the true testament of his life was seen at his wake at the Fireman's Home a few days ago, and certainly devoted his life as a public servant that touched so many people. So it's an honor that we adjourn our meeting tonight in his memory.
It was a wonderful service, and I think the Shadow Box told a whole story of his commitment to service. Incredible guy. And I think in a second, for the rest of time, I can ask that whole thing again.